The March 25th, 2020 Special Electronic Zoom Meeting of the Lynchburg City School Board is called to order. This meeting is being recorded in audio and video and will post it on the LCS website. The purpose of this electronic special school board meeting is to address the COVID-19 emergency as it relates to school closure for the remainder of the academic year. Section 2.2-3708.2A3 of the Freedom of Information Act allows such meetings in response to a state of emergency declared by the governor with certain limitations being imposed on such electronic meetings, including that, one, the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble form in a single location, and two, the purpose of this meeting is to address that emergency. If we have a few house rules, if you want to speak, if you just raise your hand and wait for me to call on you, there's a somewhat of a delay, and so we don't want people talking over others as they're coming in. I am now asking each person attending this virtual meeting to identify themselves, starting with Board Member Evans, and continue as if sitting in the boardroom. I will then ask the LCS staff and others joining this meeting to identify themselves. Board Member Evans, would you start?
Did you just ask us to? I'm having a hard time hearing you very well. I don't know if I'm alone. You're just very low.
Can you hear me better now?
A little bit. Your voice was just very soft compared to Crystal's. It's hard to hear. I'll just say, "Belle Evans, and I'm here."
Did you hear the other thing that I said about the reasons for the meeting?
I did. I did.
Okay, great. So we want to go around like we're sitting in a board meeting. So Bob, if you would go next.
This is Bob Brennan. I'm present.
Carter? Ms. Carter?
Just, okay, I did it muted. This is Sharon Carter. I'm present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Coleman?
Madam Chair, this is James Coleman. I'm present.
Thank you. Dr. Nellis?
This is Mike Nellis. I'm present.
Thank you. Dr. Sinha?
Hello, this is Kim Sinha. I am present.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
This is Gary Harvey. I am present.
Thank you. Dr. Gupta?
Mr. Zatul Gupta. I'm present.
Thank you. And then we'll restart with the members of the LCS staff who are present at this meeting as well.
Crystal Edwards, Superintendent. I am present.
Thank you.
Ben Copeland, Deputy Superintendent, present.
Thank you.
Amy Pugh, Director of Information Technology, present.
And I'm Austin Journey. I'm the Video Media Specialist.
And Hope Towns-
For me earlier, it was Kim LaConce, CFO, present.
Hope?
All right, Hope Towns School Board Attorney, present.
Kristina Servie, School Board Clerk, present.
Good everyone. Great. The next thing that we're going to do is approve the agenda for tonight. It includes two and only two items. The first item is the authorization for a period of time between March 25th and June 30th for the superintendent to make line item transfers between major classifications. The second is the establishment of a salary reserve. Is there a motion to approve?
I move the adoption of the agenda, Madam Chair.
Second, Dr. Coleman, and second by Ms. Carter. Is there any discussion? If you would all signify by roll call vote. Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Morrison, yes. Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
Dr. Harvey?
Yes.
Yes.
Now takes us to the agenda item one. Dr. Edwards?
So the first agenda item is to authorize me to be able to move funds between major categories. Our current policy allows me to do that within categories, but given the impact of COVID-19, the fact that we will have school closures, we are going to need to move our funds out of areas that go beyond just within categories. For example, we have some purchase services that we were anticipating having during this time, but now that school is not in session, we will not be receiving those purchase services. We will not have them. We would like to cancel some of those purchase orders and move that money into most likely salaries and benefits at this point to get us through the school year during this time that school has been closed. And I'll take questions.
I have a question. Why are we making this move? Is there a funding block from the state or the city to your accounts which is requiring this request?
No, there is not a block or anything. The way that this would currently run if we do not, if you do not authorize me, if I need to come back to the board and move money, let's say to cover any expenses that are related to COVID, we would have to assemble a board meeting every single time to make sure that you all approve those moves that are between major categories. So that is the reason to authorize me for this short period of time to be able to move money to address any kinds of expenses that are related to this emergency during this time.
Can I ask a question? So what kind of expenses are you foreseeing or you foresee may happen between now and June?
Okay. To give you an example of one unplanned expense, we had budgeted for postage. We had not budgeted for mailing home the amount of packets and things that we may have to mail home to children. So I may need to increase my postage budget due to the COVID, which is now putting us in a different learning environment. So I may have to move money from funds that were, we expected a purchase service to come in. Now I'm not going to have the purchase service to cover something like postage just to make sure that kids get what they need if they don't have access to internet, Wi-Fi, or anything like that. That is just one example of an anticipated cost that, you know, we may have, we're experiencing right now.
Any other questions?
If nobody else, I can keep asking. How much money do you anticipate to move over this period of time, total sum? Do you have an estimate amount?
Dr. Gupta, if I'm being very honest with you, as each day goes by, we see new challenges in trying to go from the two-week period where we were providing enrichment to the, we are now going to be closed for the full school year. So I do not have an exact dollar amount for you, which is one of the reasons why I'm asking for permission just during this short period of time to be able to meet needs as they arise. I can tell you just last week when we were doing the, preparing for the packets and giving kids paper and pencil work, the postage was one of those things that we had to address.
Other questions?
This is Bob Brennan. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Dr. Edwards, I can't imagine how difficult it's been to deal with all the changes that have occurred in the last several weeks, and I certainly understand the need to have the flexibility to move funds in ways that you may not even plan currently know how you may have, what you may need to do. Would you give the board notices about that? I know we will not vote on it, but just to let us know if you've made them, are you going to make them, where the areas would be so we are up to date on that?
Certainly. I can provide you updates as maybe on a weekly basis or depending upon how frequently I have to do that.
Sure. Thank you.
And Dr., may I speak?
Yes, Ms. Carter.
And that was my concern with Dr. Brennan just verbalized. And as long as we are getting the updates, because I know you do not have time or we may not be able to convene as quickly as you need this. And at this time, you really need to be able to act quickly. So as long as, that was my concern too, how we will be able to get the updates as things are moved.
So one of the things that we are tracking and logging in every single department is the, any expenses that are directly related to COVID. So all of the things that we've been doing, we've been keeping track of all of those expenses because we are in this emergency state.
Other questions?
Question. So this money, I'm sorry, my video went off, is not tied to the salary reserve. So what you're, we are voting on this measure, the money will not be going into salary reserve. It will be like things like postage and other day-to-day expenses you may have to cover. Am I correct?
Well, because we haven't voted on- We haven't voted to establish a salary reserve yet, so no, the money can't go to salary reserve.
Some of it may be going-
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you-
You're basically, so some of it, extra money or leftover from accounts, you may be moving into salary, which will be higher than the threshold of $20,000.
That's possible, depending upon the nature of the crisis and our ability to get schools back up and running and possibly offer summer programs for kids to catch them up. It's an unknown at this point, but that would require salary if this thing peaks and blows over and we can do some summer work that we had not planned on doing with kids and bring staff in. That may require salary as well.
Madam Chair, I'm feeling very comfortable with what I'm hearing, what I thought I understood before we engage in this discussion. And so I'm feeling that between Dr. Edwards and Dr. Copeland and others, that whatever appropriate decision need to be made will be made and will be communicated with. And so I certainly don't want to shorten the discussion, but I'm prepared to vote in favor when we add that number.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Are you making a motion?
If it's appropriate, Madam Chair, I would move that the appropriate confidence in our-
The authorization for a period of time between March 25th and June 30th for the superintendent to make line item transfers between-
As stated.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to appreciate all the effort that the superintendent and staff are doing. It's not a situation you can plan for, and I understand the need to react. I'm comfortable with the motion, provided we get weekly updates. Have full confidence that that will happen. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Any other questions?
So motion has weekly updates in there, right?
Motion, I can include, that's understood.
I have no problem with the weekly updates, or updates as they can given to us, of course.
Right.
I'm going to do a roll call vote. Are you ready?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison, yes. Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Now takes us to the second item, establishment of a salary reserve. Dr. Edwards?
Yes. So the first motion gets us through the existing school year. In my conversations with Dr. Lane, and as we talk about what students need and the continuity of learning, there are several different things that we may be able to do, depending upon how long we're in this emergency crisis. We are going to be obligated to make sure that students are ready for the next grade. We're going to graduate our seniors and do everything that we can to ensure that they meet requirements. But as far as a second grader being prepared for third grade and so on and so forth, we may be in a situation where we, if during this summer, we can run some extended learning opportunities where we can get some additional face-to-face, if we can do some things during the school year, and I'm thinking Saturday and weekend type things, or we might extend into the next summer. So there is a possibility for a need for additional salaries that we might, salary payments that we may not have built into our current budget going into the new school year, because that will roll into the new school year. So that's one concern that I have in terms of the need for a salary reserve that will allow us to tap into that. The second concern is we are in the process of still adopting our budget based on revenue, projected revenue that, you know, a couple of weeks ago was very different than what we actually may experience going forward. Again, that is another unknown, and I will speak to particularly sales tax, sales tax currently and even going forward. That is a part of our revenue, which right now is an unknown. So what we are proposing after we make it through this current school year, that, and we have, I have already instituted a spending freeze, so we know that there will be some funds available. But my concern is for the short term, but also the long term, next year. When this crisis is over and we return to schooling, although I don't think it'll look exactly as it looks right now, it'll be a little bit better probably due to all of our efforts for blended learning. We are going to need to still maintain a high-quality staff to meet the needs of our students. We're going to need to be able to afford their salaries. And the part that I don't, I can't predict is what our revenues will look like next year and if we will actually be able to make payroll even with the budget proposal that we have going forward. So my request to do a salary reserve is more to protect our staff going forward and to guard against the unknown in terms of what the impact of this COVID pandemic will do, not only to the current school year, but for next year.
Questions?
Yes. Dr. Edwards, can you explain that again? I'm not fully grasping what's being asked for.
Okay. So currently, we do not have a salary reserve to cover any shortfalls we may have. So our budget going forward would be based on anticipated revenue. And remember, we talked about this the last couple of months, that we anticipate getting so much revenue from the state, we anticipate getting so much revenue from our city to move forward with our budget. Eighty percent of our budget is staffing, is personnel. If there is a change in the amount of revenue that we receive, but we still have the students that we need to educate, and I still need all of my teachers on staff to educate those students, and those teachers still need a salary, we may find ourselves where we might have to compensate for salary for staff next year. So what I'm suggesting is, we know that we may have some savings. Since our buildings are closed, I can't imagine we're flushing toilets as much, so there may be some savings from water usage. Any savings that we have, if we could establish a salary reserve as a guard going into next year to kind of compensate for any unknowns that this COVID pandemic may have on our next-year budget and revenue and operations, it will allow us to make sure that we can maintain our staff, maintain our teaching staff so we can get back to normal teaching going forward.
Ms. Morrison, I have a question. So I understand it's short-term, it provides you a little cushion, but this meal tax, sale tax shock may last for more than one year. So we may take a short-term feeling good that we are able to cover expenses. What's your plan for the year after that and the year after that?
Good question, Dr. Gupta. And again, as this unfolds each day and we see the impact of it, I think like every business in this community, and not just this community, across this nation and other places, we are all looking at how we're tightening our belts and how we're doing business slightly different than we were a couple of weeks ago. My plan in terms of what we need to do is, you know, right now, we are running essential staff trying to meet the needs of students. We do have an obligation to educate our kids. That's my number-one plan, making sure that I can have, when we get back to full contact and we're not held to the spread of this virus, I need to make sure that my students have quality teachers in front of them, instructing them, and remediating any differences or anything that happened, and I call them gaps that may have occurred during this time. So my plan, although I would love to say I have a fully thought-out three-year plan, I don't, I can't give you a fully thought-out three-year plan because I can't predict the impact that this virus is having on our economy at this point in time. I can only go by what I'm seeing right now with our local businesses enclosed and the impact that may have on sales tax just in this community and in the state.
I have one more follow-up if I can ask, Ms. Morrison. So my issue with this is, you know, today, the standard is going to approve $2 million funding or $2 trillion funding. And a part of that funding is for local and state governments to meet COVID-19 or nine, whatever it is, the losses. So if you build up this cushion, city may not come to pitch in to the monies you need when June, July, August rolls in, because they'll say, "Look, you've got money in your coffers. Why do you need money which is trickling down from feds to the state, to local, to the city schools?" You see what I'm saying? Because you have built in and saved and did a good job in saving money and putting it in a pot. So that will, will that exclude you from all that money trickling down from Uncle Sam?
And I certainly understand that-
Believe this one now.
Believe me, I have considered the impact of saying, "Well, if I save a little penny so that I could, you know, make sure that my staff is available to teach my students, will that work against me?" And I have to say that in my role as superintendent, my number-one responsibility is making sure that children are educated. And when I go through the lens of making sure children are educated, understanding, and teachers are primary instructor and delivery of that, I have to do, I have to propose something that will provide some support to make sure that I do have teachers available. I understand what you're saying in terms of the community could say, "Well, now that you did this, we're not going to give you any money." But I would say during this time, we have shown this community through our efforts over the last two weeks that we are all in this together and that I have very good people, many of them are lowest-paid workers who have been out there on the front lines risking themselves to, for the community so that when we're past this COVID, when we're past this, I would hope that our community would say, "And we're here for you now."
No, I think the community supports it. My point is take the emotions up. Look at from a logical perspective, the timing of creating this reserve. Should we wait for a few weeks before we create this reserve, or should we do it now? Because right now, it's not clear what's trickling down from federal government to the state, to the local, to the school districts in terms of $150 to $200 billion they plan to allocate. Right now, it's not clear as of today, but it may be clear in a week or two time. Will it be late, but-
I certainly agree with you, and I've been keeping my eye on politics and trying to figure out how much of the money stimulus package, how much is coming to schools, how much are going to the individual families right now that are out of work. What I'm asking you to do right now is just authorize me, to authorize me to establish a salary reserve. I haven't decided like whether I put this amount of money in or that amount of money in. It does give me the time to look at what is our current need and what, as things change on almost a daily basis, what do those needs look like going forward?
I can hear Susan.
Sorry?
We didn't hear you, Susan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I think this is being proactive, and I think that it's a positive, positive step to take. We're sending a positive message to our staff and to the community about what's important, and I think that's the message they need. And I think that for us not to do this would send a negative message. And I want us to be prepared when we get our students back in school and to have the money to pay teachers to go in and teach and close those gaps and help our students move forward. I do have one other question about salary and benefits. As this virus continues to grow and more and more people need medical attention, are we prepared in terms of our benefits to be able to make sure that we're covering those two? And that could be part of what we are looking at in terms of salary as well.
It is. Yes. It is something we're monitoring. I think Dr. Sinha had a question. She had her hand up.
Okay. I can't see, I can't see Kim.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. I'm just, I mean, just to ask Dr. Gupta, where else would the money go? It's not like we're going to say we have a windfall of funds, which I'm pretty sure we don't have, and then go on a spending spree. It would be unwise to do that. And I don't think anybody can plan past end of April, let alone three years down the road. And I think it's also safe to assume that no matter what comes down from the federal government, trickles through the states, down to the localities, it's not going to be enough. I'm all for putting whatever we can do to put aside for our personnel or our teachers. If it gets taken away, there's nothing we can do about it. But if it doesn't, we're all the better for having it. So I don't, I don't see a downside of doing that way, and I don't really see an alternative for where we might shift resources that become available.
See, the question is not about whether it's need or not. I was questioning the timing of it. Should we wait for a few weeks, or should we do it now?
So Dr. Brennan has a hand raised, and Ms. Evans has a hand raised as well.
Dr. Edwards, I understand the need for the salary reserve, and I think it makes sense. Can you just help me? I think we've talked about salary reserve before regarding our relationship with the city and whether we can establish that and what the, who controls that. Can you just help us, bring us up to date on that conversation?
Yes, we have other reserves that are in the city. It would be something that we would have to take to city council with our rationale that this is why we want to form our salary reserve. At the end of 2018, going into the 1920 school year, I did have that conversation with the city manager. the city manager. I think that, um, given that we are in the, and I want to make sure we stay faithful to the COVID pandemic is the major reason that is driving this. This is not related to our regular, regular budget like we were preparing before, but we really are looking at the impact that this pandemic is having on us operating as a school division, that being part of the rationale that I would take it um, to the the city to say, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're anticipating in terms of just trying to make sure that we have the staff available next year when school opens back up to meet the needs of our students.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans, did you have a? And then Ms. Carter had her.
I just wanted to.
Belle, we can't hear you.
I totally agree as well.
Okay, Belle, Ms. Evans, you're gonna have to repeat all of that. We did not hear you.
Oh, I just was saying, I think the part that Susan brought up about what it shows to the teacher and our belief that they are the number one priority, that we need to take care of them, can't be understated. I think that that's a huge benefit, and I think that we need to show that.
Ms. Carter had her hand up.
Okay, who who did?
Ms. Carter.
Yes, so Dr. Edwards, are you, in doing this salary reserve, are you also, are you planning ahead, knowing that some of the students are going to be far behind and experiencing more of a gap due to this, due to them not being in school, not having the supervision, and may really need some top level teachers and extra remedial services to get to where they need to be?
Um, I am hopeful.
Is there some of that too?
Yeah, I am hopeful that we can continue, um, a host of learning activities for our students, um, through multiple means. But I'm also realistic that during this time, we may have students who they might have had internet access, but if both parents are now unemployed or underemployed, maybe that was something that they cut. So I'm anticipating it, my responsibility to say, how am I going to make sure that that student is where he or she needs to be in the next year? We also have students who English is not their first language, that we want to make sure that we provide any services in time for them. So when school starts, we do anticipate that it may look a little different as we bring our kids in. One of the first things we want to do is look at what skill, what is their skill level right now? Where are they? And then what do we need to do to get them to where they need to be successful going into the next grade?
Harvey has a question?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to say I'm going to be voting in favor of this for several reasons. I think first of all, um, Dr. Edwards, I I thank you for all of your efforts and your forethought in setting this, uh, these measures in place, because I think this is going to be critical, not only for our teachers, but also for our nutrition workers, for our school bus drivers, for our maintenance folks, because we just don't know what is going to be, um, happening over the next few months and into the summer. In addition, you know, we might be, we might make it through this pandemic and we might have the opportunity to maybe start the school year earlier or start, um, providing additional services to to certain students that could could benefit from additional help during the summer to prepare them for next year. And there also might be other avenues that we could, um, implement our teachers to support other community, um, groups who are working to help bridge the gap, um, that, you know, typically during the summer, but more so maybe this summer. So I will be, I will be voting in favor of this as I think it's, um, it's a smart move and it's good planning.
Thank you, um, Mr. Harvey for, and I know I have said teachers, 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 and I need to watch that it's not just teachers that are taking care of our babies. And if we look at just the last week, it's been the nutrition department, the transportation department, um, nurses that have gone to homes, to to social workers to drop off medicine. It really is our staff, um, our entire staff that we need, um, to make sure that they're all here for our students to provide for their needs. I don't see any more hands up. Ms., uh, Dr. Coleman looks like he has his hand up.
Yes, I will also be supporting this. I believe that it mitigates the fear factor that is real for all of our staff. As our chair has stated, it would show us as the, uh, one, people of forethought. They will send a message to Governor Northam, to Secretary Conney, State Superintendent Lane, Mayor Tweedy, and our council and members of the community. And so I support it, uh, having fielded several questions that, um, for instance, I have about this, I just think it's the right thing to do.
I, uh, move to approve the motion to, uh, set up a salary reserve fund. I guess that's gonna have to be contingent on, um, getting an agreement in place with city council. Uh, I guess that's just a little aside, but, uh, I I make a motion to approve the salary reserve.
Second, a second.
I heard a second. Dr. Coleman?
Well, I defer to school board member Carter.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. How are you?
Question or questions? Roll call vote? Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Beth? Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
No.
Motion passed. That concludes our business meeting for tonight. Are there any board comments at this point?
Yes. Yes, I have one.
I have one also.
Before you comment, I'd just like to remind every.
I just wanted to.
Before you comment, I would just like to remind everybody of the rules of this special meeting and everything has to be related to, discussion has to be about this COVID pandemic, um, um, emergency that we're in. So if you have comments related to other things, please keep them related to this emergency. Sorry, Ms. Carter, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say, just, uh, I was able to volunteer as we were handing out the packets and the food supplies to the children. And just what a wonderful job we were doing and the, how appreciative the children were and the parents and even the school officials to see the kids. And just want to do a shout out to Mrs. Deja, she was the bus driver on Bus 71, and Mrs. Lipskin with the pre-K, and, uh, Mrs. Jackson at RS Payne, and Miss Lipskin for TC Miller, and Miss Mary Payne, our nutrition, uh, manager at Payne. Just a wonderful time and just how much devotion and skill and thought went into doing those lunches, down to the fact of the, just the expert packaging and just how it was really appreciated and well received. And that's how we get more students into LCA, I mean, LCA, excuse me, LCS. I know, excuse me, I did the wrong, wrong last letter, LCS. That's how we can recruit more students. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. S- um, Edwards.
Other comments?
I have one.
Dr. Gupta?
So I have followed some of these buses, and I agree, uh, I'd like to thank all the bus drivers, so I can see the excitement in kids that I shared with Ms. Morrison, that, you know, they're, it's, I cannot be more grateful to anybody other than our bus drivers. They're driving, they're very patient. They wait for these kids to come, deliver them food, and all the cars were backed up without red lights, waiting and watching these kids getting food. And I'd like to give a shout out to Dr. Copeland too, because he's been quietly working behind the scenes, being an operation guy and managing all these things in a very low profile, um, in very efficient way. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, I don't know whether I can be heard on that, but I just wanted to acknowledge that I had the opportunity to attend the press conference that superintendent and staff put on the EC glass. Yeah, I just wanted to state that I did attend the press conference that the superintendent and staff put on at EC glass the other day, and I just thought it was first class as Dr. Edwards, Dr. Copeland, Beth, um, Ethel, others, uh, shared a wonderful, wonderful, uh, aspects of how we're working together in the midst of this pandemic locally. And so I was very proud just to be a witness of the effectiveness of our school division at this time. Yes.
Thank you. All right, everybody, this concludes our meeting, and, um, meeting is adjourned.